Good evening. Welcome to the May 1st, 2023 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I'm going to call this meeting to order. That means you guys have to be in order for the rest of the meeting. We have very special guests with us here tonight. We have an eight and under Stillwater Area Sports Association, SASSA, Coach Pitch Baseball Team, the Vipers, who undertook a community service project as part of their baseball team, right?
Yeah.
Carolyn or does...
Coach Thompson.
Coach Thompson. Where are you, Coach? Get up here. This is Coach Luke Thompson. Tell us a little bit about your community service project. Please, yeah.
Yeah, well, we have a practice field down the road from where we live and we're very grateful to have multiple options, places to practice. SASSA does a great job having the fields ready to go. So we noticed that there was quite a bit of trash gathering around that in the tennis courts, so we just decided we'd pick it up. And it was a lot more than we had expected, so I had to email Carolyn and ask her if she had a dumpster because it filled my entire truck. The boys were great, didn't complain. We practiced for two hours, then picked up trash, and they just, they made it fun. It was great, and we're very grateful to have a place to practice. So, thank you.
That is fantastic. Thank you so much, Coach. We appreciate you guys and your team for being here and for the work that you've done to help beautify the community. I'm actually going to read off the roster. I think I've got everybody's name, and I'm going to try to pronounce them right. And I want you guys, when I call your name, to come up because you're going to help us, you're going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us, right? So when I call your name, come stand right up here by the podium, okay? Tate Horton, Heinrich Huskersen, Ames Cavalier, Wyatt Lawler, Lane Lineman, Case McCabe, Dean Osment, Jett Russell, Carter Seuss, Cooper Cisco, Tucker Sorrell, Weston Starks, Baylor Teon, and Easton Thompson. All right, guys, thank you so much. Now, we'll turn around and face the flag behind you, and if everybody else could stand, then they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(audience) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Vipers.
Want to take a picture with him, Mayor?
I don't want to get him all.
(inaudible).
Thank you, Carolyn. Now, all the fun is leaving the City Council meeting.
Absolutely. All the energy, for sure.
Yes, all the energy. That's just the usual suspects in here now. All right, well, next up, we have a proclamation in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. And I think we have Katie Leonard from the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. So Katie, I'll read the proclamation. If, I don't know if you have a few words you'd like to say about Mental Health Month? If not, I'll just bring you the proclamation and...
I'll just say, thank you all.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. If you could step to the podium and...
I'm like normally.
We like to have, it's on TV, so you're going to get a...
Oh, sure.
Well, I just want to thank you all. Stillwater is our second city in the state to recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month, so I just really appreciate your dedication to mental health on behalf of the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. So thank you all, and thank you all.
Thank you for being here. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas each week approximately 300 Oklahomans are admitted for urgent care or crisis mental health services, and whereas nearly 300,000 Oklahomans report having a substance use disorder, and whereas mental health helps sustain an individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change or face adversity, and whereas mental health, excuse me, mental illness adversely affects those abilities and often becomes life-threatening, increasing suicidal thoughts and attempts, and whereas 4.1% of adults in Oklahoma had serious thoughts of suicide in the past year, with 1 in 10 students reporting an attempted suicide in the past 12 months. Early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in the successful management of mental health, mental illness and recovery, and whereas substance use disorder is not a moral issue but rather a chronic treatable disease that individuals can recover from and go on to live healthy lives. And whereas the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services believes that Oklahomans deserve to have mental health and addiction services within reach without fear of judgment or shame through evidence-based crisis response continuum, which meets people where they are and when they need it most, and whereas there are safe, effective, and life-saving tools available to help experience substance abuse, to help people experiencing substance abuse, and whereas the 988 Mental Health Lifeline supports Oklahomans experiencing a mental health crisis through trained mental health professionals via text or call, mobile crisis teams, urgent care, and crisis centers and follow-up appointments, and whereas the 988 Mental Health Lifeline is free, confidential, and accessible for all Oklahomans. And whereas civic activities and conversations help educate the public about mental health and help families affected by mental health to heal, recover, and thrive. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, by the authority vested in me do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Stillwater, Oklahoma, to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote identification and treatment of mental illness. All right. That takes us to item four of the agenda, which is the Consent Docket. I am going to ask that we remove item E from the Consent Docket. Any other comments, questions, or a motion on the consent?
Motion to approve Consent Docket minus item E.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent minus item E. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. It takes us to item five, which is public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing. We have one person, Michael Buxton, signed up to speak. If you could come to the podium and introduce yourself with your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Michael Buxton, 5203 North Washington. Thank you for visiting with, let me visit with you this evening. I'm the owner-operator of Stillwater Turf Services. My son Caleb is here in the audience with us. I've had the contract for the last four years, and I was under the impression, due to conversations back in October, that I had an extension with, on the contract. This was going on, basically conversations between me and the city until about March 9th, whenever they said that there was legal review and drafting the new contract. On the 14th, I received a phone call from city staff saying that the, there was some mistake on the paperwork, basically from the fall, and so thus they needed to rebid. I did complete a bid packet. I reassessed our pricing from last year and actually come down on those properties from last year, but unfortunately, there were two companies that actually come in considerably lower than me. Whenever you look at the pricing that they had for the properties, they drastically dropped the price on numerous properties that do not even cover my labor expenses to do the properties. So I have come here today just, I guess, pleading my case, thinking about the local jobs that are going to be lost potentially to outside companies coming in, due by all my equipment and all of my staff that's hired here from here in town. So I'd like for you to take that in consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. All right. Item six is items removed from the Consent Docket, so on item E is award bid for mowing service of city facilities for fiscal year '24. I think Mark White is here. Mark, if you, could you give us a sort of staff report on this contract and the bidding?
Yeah, Mark White, Public Works. So we did have to solicit bids for the maintenance of 30 city-owned locations, including parks, buildings, traffic islands, and right-of-ways. It's an annual bid that's been in place for the past several years to provide upgrade mowing, maintenance for highly visible areas, and to reduce the mowing maintenance on public works on our employees. So it allows us to focus on the larger parks. The bids were solicited. They were advertised in the news press, on the city's website, and four potential bidders were notified of the bid. The low bid was received from Brightview Landscape Services in the amount of $137,243. They are a national landscape business with an Oklahoma City branch that currently is just starting to service Edmund. So based on pricing, it was our recommendation to award the bid to Brightview.
Do you have a, the other bid numbers, like how close...
Yes, yeah. Brightview is $137,0243. Gladiator out of Hennessy was $148,933. Stillwater Turf Services was $163,840. And Signature Landscape out of Oklahoma City was $240,000.
And so staff's recommendations just based on the lowest responsible bidder?
Yes, and we did, we did check because we weren't familiar with them. I called Scott Wilson in Irving, Texas, which is one of their customers. They do about a $700,000 service for them in the Los Colinas Association. I tried to get ahold of Plano, Texas, was not able to, but they have a $1 million contract with the Plano Independent School District. They also do ExxonMobil and had City of Denton and Frisco and some other cities there, municipalities. They use electric, all electrics, electric mowers, electric weed eaters.
Counselors, any questions?
How do these amounts compare to what we ended up paying for the last fiscal year?
We paid $126,000 last year, but we also added four parks to this year's bid.
To this year's bid?
Yes. And this is also a one-year bid, so we will rebid it in the fall, just so you know.
For new services starting, it will be rebid in the fall for what period?
What we're going to do is probably change again and try to add more parks, so then we can get them mowed more frequently.
Okay. So this is just straight looking at the bids. This doesn't look at the economic impact locally of a local vendor versus an outside vendor, it doesn't look at any of that, right?
There's a, I believe it's a 5% local preference, so you know, you could go up 5% off the lowest bid, is what Mr. McLennan shared with me, and that still doesn't get us to the number from Mr. Buxton.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, counselors? Mark, could you give us staff's recommendation?
Yeah, staff's recommendation is to go with Brightview Landscape Services in the amount of $137,243.
Thank you. Counselors, comments? Questions? Motions?
I will take the privilege to move from the chair, and I'm going to move for us to accept staff's recommendation. I want us to have preference for local contractors. I think that's built into our purchasing manual as it is. I think we want to follow that policy as closely as we can, given that that preference is not a high enough amount, in this case, to award it to a local contractor. I think there's certainly a hope in, when this is rebid later this year, that we may be able to find a local contractor that gets, that gets closer to the bid. But I think that purchasing manual has been something we've worked on for a long time here, and it's always easiest if government follows the rules they put in place. As much as, you know, it is, I think, a preference for, certainly for me, I think probably for most of us, to say, we'd like to see this go to a local company, I'm going to move that we follow staff's recommendation and, and award the bid per the, per the purchasing manual.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid to Brightview Landscape Services. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. All right. That takes us to item seven on the agenda, public hearings. First up, 7A pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112 and 11OS Section 22-112.4. Stillwater City Council will now conduct a hearing to determine whether the secondary structure located at 601 West 10th Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, secondary structure is also identified as located at 1012 South Knoblock, Stillwater, Oklahoma, whether that structure is dilapidated as defined in 11OS Section 22-112C and abandoned as defined in Section 11OS, Section 112, Section 22-112.4E, here and now in this room. At said date and time, the City Council shall make a determination as to whether the said secondary structure is dilapidated and/or abandoned as defined by the referenced statutes and whether the order to, of abatement and removal of said structure and the assessment of associated costs thereof to the said property owner. Beth Ann Childs is here to present the information on this property.
Thank you so much, Mayor. My name is Beth Ann Childs. I'm Special Counsel for the City of Stillwater. This actually was on the agenda a month ago. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to drive by there today, but some pretty significant progress has actually been made by Mr. Van, who is present here today. Initially, I wasn't entirely sure about staff's recommendation in terms of recommending a continuance, but he has made some pretty significant progress, and so if you were so inclined, and he does understand that this is the last, this would be the last continuance that staff would be willing to recommend, but if you are so inclined, he's in agreement, we would request that you move it to the first meeting in June, which is, I'm sorry, I should have written that date down.
June 5th?
June 5th. June 5th, and then you would need to move the resolution as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but you can see, I asked Mr. Moore to go by there, and there really has been significant work compared to where it was before.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Beth Ann. Counselors, any questions?
I'll just comment that I drove by there just before noon today, and it looks better even in that picture than it looked when I was there. There was Tyvek up, the front of the house was sited, and he was, he was actively outside working, the owner himself was actively outside working on it, and I think we should give him the 30 days.
Is there a motion to...
Table the item to June 5th.
Table the item to June 5th?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item 7A to June 5th. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is tabled until our June 5th meeting. It takes us to 7V pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112 and 11OS Section 22-112.4. Stillwater City Council will now conduct a hearing to determine whether the secondary structure located at 601 West 10th Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, secondary structure is also identified as located at 1012 South Knoblock, Stillwater, Oklahoma, whether that structure is dilapidated as defined in 11OS Section 22-112C and abandoned as defined in Section 11OS, Section 112, Section 22-112.4E, here and now in this room. At said date and time, the City Council shall make a determination as to whether the said secondary structure is dilapidated and/or abandoned as defined by the referenced statutes and whether the order to, of abatement and removal of said structure and the assessment of associated costs thereof to the said property owner. Beth Ann Childs is here to present the information on this property.
Thank you so much, Mayor. My name is Beth Ann Childs. I'm Special Counsel for the City of Stillwater. This actually was on the agenda a month ago. I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to drive by there today, but some pretty significant progress has actually been made by Mr. Van, who is present here today. Initially, I wasn't entirely sure about staff's recommendation in terms of recommending a continuance, but he has made some pretty significant progress, and so if you were so inclined, and he does understand that this is the last, this would be the last continuance that staff would be willing to recommend, but if you are so inclined, he's in agreement, we would request that you move it to the first meeting in June, which is, I'm sorry, I should have written that date down.
June 5th?
June 5th. June 5th, and then you would need to move the resolution as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but you can see, I asked Mr. Moore to go by there, and there really has been significant work compared to where it was before.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Beth Ann. Counselors, any questions?
I'll just comment that I drove by there just before noon today, and it looks better even in that picture than it looked when I was there. There was Tyvek up, the front of the house was sited, and he was, he was actively outside working, the owner himself was actively outside working on it, and I think we should give him the 30 days.
Is there a motion to...
Table the item to June 5th.
Table the item to June 5th?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table item 7A to June 5th. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is tabled until our June 5th meeting. It takes us to 7V pursuant to 11OS Section 22-112 and 11OS Section 22-112.4. Stillwater City Council will now conduct a hearing to determine whether the structure located at 915 South McDonald Street, Stillwater, Oklahoma, is dilapidated as defined in 11OS Section 22-112C and abandoned as defined in 11OS Section 22-112.4E, here in this room right now. At this time, the City Council will make a determination as to whether said structure is dilapidated and/or abandoned as defined by the referenced statutes and whether to order the abatement and removal of said structure and the assessment of associated costs thereof to the, to the property owner. Ms. Childs?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have an opportunity to visit with Mr. and Ms. Knight this, this evening just before the meeting. They do have a plan, I believe, to address this, but you may recall that the reason that we requested that you table this item and the one before it was so that we could get a title opinion. I told the city attorney I was a little bit concerned about the title because it had passed through certain owners, and also there had been several mortgages over the years, and I just wanted to make sure that we were able to provide notice. That, we actually received it just before the meeting last time, so we were, we were able to get that done, and we do believe that we have proper notice. In this particular case, I did explain to Mr. and Mrs. Knight that we really do need to see significant progress on this. They do have several things going on. They are probably going to want an opportunity to visit with you tonight about things that they will get done, but at this point in time, it is staff's recommendation that you go ahead and conduct the public hearing and approve the resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselors, any questions for Ms. Childs? All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
They indicate that they would not like to say anything, and so I did spend some time with them. Mr. Moore met with them as well. We explained to them that they will have 90 days from today's date to make significant process, progress on the structure, and Mr. Moore, as always, of course, will work with them in that regard. So if you, the recommendation would be simply to close the public hearing and then approve the resolution.
Thank you, Beth Ann. This time, I will close the public hearing, and we will address the item under, item nine on the agenda, resolutions. All right, at this time, we will move to item eight, general orders. 8A is an update on the timeline for a new City of Stillwater webpage from Brad Stewart.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. I am Brad Stewart, IT Director, and I'm going to give you a brief update on the process we've made, progress we've made so far on the city's website project. And although I'm doing the presenting this evening, the bulk of the work is done by others, and so I really want to make sure they get the credit they deserve. Billy Foltz, who's on the back row, has been doing a lot of work on this project. He's actually an employee of Ms. Dawn Jones in the Communications Department. He was hired in November as our Web Content Manager, excuse me, and he's been involved in every aspect of this project. Lately, he's been meeting with each city department to make sure the website content is updated and relevant. He's also reached out to our community partners like Visit Stillwater, Chamber of Commerce, and the Downtown Association to make them aware of the new website and online features and to get their input and feedback. He really hit the ground running with his new position, and he's been doing a fantastic job. Gene Comer, who's in the IT Department with me, has also been heavily involved in this project. Gene is not with us this evening, but I want to give him some recognition as well. He's been critical in the setup and configuration, and he's also taken the lead on some of the modules that have been implemented thus far. Many other employees from several departments have been involved in the project in one way or another, so it really has been a team effort and could not be completed otherwise, but I especially want to recognize Gene and Billy for their efforts. On June 13th of last year, City Council approved the selection of Civic Plus to provide a new city website and other hosted web solutions. Since that time, staff has been working with Civic Plus on concepts, design, configuration, training, and content migration. It's been a long progress, process so far, and we still have a few more weeks before we're ready to roll it out to the public, but we're getting close. And the project does actually include more than just a new main city website. There are four subsites included, and those will be for police, fire, airport, and library. And there are some specific online modules that we purchased in addition to the websites. Those modules include a park and rec module, an agenda and meeting management module, a process automation module, and these, these modules are really software applications in and of themselves, but they do integrate with our city website. These three modules have already been configured and set up, and in fact, two of the three are currently being utilized in one way or another. The park and rec module was used to sell tickets to the upcoming Dancing with Daddy event, which is this weekend, I believe, and the process automation module has been used to create online web forms and workflows for a couple of things, one being the COVID Impact Assistance Program and the other being online job applications. Because of the standalone nature of these modules, we were able to go ahead and put them into use prior to the rollout of the entire website, and we've gotten pretty good feedback so far, especially from HR, our HR team, who's been utilizing the online applications. So we're excited about these modules and getting them fully implemented and in use. The park and rec module handles event ticket sales like the Dancing with Daddy. It will also allow for facility and room reservations, which Community Center, Parks and Rec, and Library are all planning to utilize. It's completely customizable and can be configured to handle multiple pricing tiers, different room layouts, accessory options, discounts, et cetera. The process automation module is a tool for creating customized web forms and workflows. Gene and Billy trained on that module and, and were immediately excited about its potential and what they could, the possibilities it presented, and as I mentioned, they've already put some of those into use and have identified several more that they've earmarked for future creation. And finally, the agenda and meeting management module will automate the process for creating meeting agendas, such as this meeting, as well as run the actual meeting themselves, displaying the current agenda item, taking votes, recording votes, countdown timers for speakers, and real-time minutes. So we'll be rolling that out soon. We've got some mock meetings scheduled for us to get familiar, and that's coming. So beyond the modules, we're very excited about the new websites themselves, and I have some visual teasers. Again, we're not ready to roll this out, so these are just quick little teasers to give you an idea of the feel. So this is the main website, and you'll see large graphic buttons for our most visited pages and hot topics. Quickly, as you scroll down, there's some, some Stillwater spotlights and a section for latest news and upcoming events. This is an example of a sub-site for our airport, so you'll notice a similar look and feel as the main site so that it all ties together, but it would be customized for the sub-site department. Again, just a quick, just a quick teaser. The new site will have features that our current site could not offer, and one feature is an AI chatbot that will help our citizens automatically find some information or maybe answer a question on its own. So this, this slide shows over on the right side, and an example, the chatbot was asked how to request an accident report, and it, it comes back with some information about our hours and, and some information to bring in, but also includes some useful links. So that's something that we did not have before. Another, another feature that I'm excited about is, is a built-in tool. It's called AudioEye, but it ensures that our pages are ADA compliant and, and web accessibility and meet web, web accessibility guidelines. And besides making sure that they're compatible with ADA and accessible as we are creating the pages, the tool also can assist citizens as they are using the site real-time. So this, this example shows a pop-up that would allow a user on our website to change contrast, change colors, enlarge text, change fonts, including to a font that's easier for dyslexic persons to read, highlight hyperlinks, and more. I didn't even know there were fonts for, for dyslexic people, but that, that was exciting to me. Citizen engagement will be an area of focus on the new site as well, with tools like opinion polls, together citizen feedback, a request tracker for reporting and following issues, and a notify me widget where citizens can subscribe to receive notifications or newsletters in areas they're interested in. So again, we're getting very close. We're not quite there yet. We hope to have these new websites and modules fully implemented and ready to release in late June or maybe July, and as that gets a little closer, you'll see some more marketing We hope that you're excited for the new website as well and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Counselors, any questions?
So I do. On our current website, when you scroll, the, the main page, scroll down, all the way down to the bottom, there's five or six pictures that are projects and that sort of thing to keep updated. They've not been, been updated very well. I've noticed in the last week or two, some have been updated. Thank you very much for that. I would hope that you would continue something like that on ours so, so that people can easily get to Block 34 Perkins, Washington School. And not updates every week, but updates monthly or something like that. And not engineering updates, just a paragraph. You know, a paragraph and maybe a picture. Now, we've got bridges under construction. What's the latest deadline on that? I get asked all the time, what's the latest on husband? Okay, and I can track it down, I can find it, but it's really hard to find right now. It'd be really nice to have that available like right up front. And I didn't catch what all your bullets were on the front page, but it'd be nice to have something like that.
That's great feedback and we do intend to have that information readily accessible on the new site.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, Brad, I'm, I'm delighted to see the new modules and glad to hear that they're being used and working out well. The new user interface looks great. The single thing I hear most about the website is even if I know what I'm looking for, I can't find it. Right? So what is being done on the search side to make it easier to find things?
We, we hope the chatbot will eliminate a lot of that, but there is a inherent search feature on the website that I think is going to be more user-friendly and, and give better results as well.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, just to piggyback a little bit off Counselor Harden, sort of the content update schedule, and I know we have sort of, I mean, regardless of what the, what the website infrastructure looks like, something where somebody is actually updating on a regular basis. I feel like we have those schedules. I agree with Counselor Harden that they need to be maybe compressed a little bit or we need to make sure that we're, we're, I don't know if that's part of this project to make sure we've got like a, a schedule for each page. Okay, these bridges are going to get updated on this kind of schedule, these pages are going to get updated on this schedule, that sort of thing.
It, it is a part of, I don't know if we have written policy, but, but Billy, again, on the back row, is, his job, his main job was as a content manager for the website. And so he will be meeting regularly with the departments to make sure that the projects are updated and that the, the relevant information is put on the website.
So we're all just going to start texting Billy when we need to see stuff?
Yes, absolutely.
We're kidding, we're not going to do that.
And again, I'll, I'll follow up on that, you know, common language. You know, some of the stuff on there is engineering-related. I'm an engineer, I have a hard time following some of it too, but you know, a simple paragraph that, here's where we are, here's where we're going, here's, you know, here's what we expect to have done, could be very short, could be pretty easy to update, I would think.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Just to add to what Director Stewart is saying, that I would like for you to, to meet Billy, if that would be at all possible. Billy, if you could come up here and say hi. We have reconstructed the communications team. Many thanks to Mr. McNichol and Ms. Reams for allowing that to happen and working with me on that. And we have completely reconstructed the communications team to develop a web position. And so I really want you to hear from Billy because he's doing such great things. We, we could not be here if it weren't for your approval for this new tool that is a necessity in today's communication age and to have someone like Billy and Brad and Gene to lead this, we are very, very, very grateful. So Billy, if you could just say hi and come up and, and if you have any questions, please do not hesitate. Billy.Foltz@stillwater.org.
I, I'm guessing Billy was hoping to stay on the back row.
Hello, everyone. My name is Billy Foltz. I'm the Website Content Manager. And yes, Counselor Harden, to answer your question, we will be updating the current projects, the ones that are on the current website. I was actually working just last week to get them updated. Not on the current website, on the new one. Do you have any other questions?
Just say thank you for all your work.
Thanks for the great work.
For everyone's work because I know how, how difficult it is to get a really good website and manage the content and so, thank you all.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Anything further? Counselors, any further questions about the website? Looking forward to, when, when's, uh, launch day?
We're, we're hoping in July.
Okay.
Potentially a little sooner, but July is realistic.
We appreciate that. Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to item eight B, consider forming a subcommittee to work with SGR to select finalists for the city manager search. Ms. Carley?
Yes, and as you will recall, we have retained executive recruitment firm SGR to assist us with our city manager search. Our job posting has closed and we're ready to move forward with that process and I'm asking that you appoint a subcommittee to work with SGR directly so that they can assist as part of the scope of services. SGR is going to do a review and initial screening of those applicants and then brief the subcommittee on a recommendation for semifinalists, at which point we will continue with executive sessions and review by the full council to take action on selecting finalists. And, and speaking with SGR, the subcommittee can be, in some cities, it's an HR Director and the City Attorney. In other cities, it's the Mayor and the Vice Mayor. It's kind of up to you, but if you would please appoint a subcommittee of two.
Counselors, questions?
Could it be two city counselors and some staff members? Does it have to be two?
And so, it depends, my lawyer answer. It's significant if there's going to be council members because we want to ensure that it's a small group, less than a quorum. And want to be very mindful of making sure that we are not having an open meeting act violation.
Right, I understood that, but...
Yes, SGR is already working pretty closely with the HR Director, so by default, there will be some staff involvement. I've been somewhat just in the wings in case they need to ask me questions, so I've not been involved at this point. It could be.
You looking for a motion? I'm happy to make one.
Go for it.
All right, I move that the Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Attorney, and HR Director be appointed as a subcommittee to review the city manager applicant pool.
Second.
Counselors? We have a motion and a second, please vote. We vote a five to zero, that subcommittee is appointed. Do we know when SGR will be ready to make a presentation?
HR Director, Driscoll. She is more familiar with the timeline than I am.
We are meeting at dates sometime between now and May 20th, so hopefully in that teen range, we'll have that and then semifinalists will be moving forward. And then they'll send back out information, we'll get questionnaires, we'll get online interviews and resumes, they'll compile that and then get that back to us within a month. So we are moving according to schedule, even though this was the slow part because it was behind the scenes.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to item nine, resolutions. Resolution, item eight, nine A is Resolution CC-2023-13, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2023-24. We've had our public hearings on this item. Counselors, questions, comments, or a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2023-13.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. We vote a five to zero, the resolution is adopted. Item nine B can be tabled, I think that was the item that we've rescheduled to, to June 5th. We don't need a vote to table that resolution though, correct? Item nine C is Resolution CC-2023-14, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council declaring the structure located at 915 South McDonald Street, Stillwater, Oklahoma, dilapidated and abandoned, had a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community, and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11 OS Section 22-112. It's a resolution on the other, dilapidated the structure with a 90-day period before it will be enforced. Questions, comments, or a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2023-14. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution, please vote. We vote a five to zero, that resolution is adopted. Item nine D is Resolution CC-2023-15, a resolution notifying the public of the compiling and publishing of the code supplement number nine to the code of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma. Ms. Carley, you want to give us a brief sort of primer on, on what code supplements are?
Yes, this is a routine matter. State law requires that cities keep their codes up to date. So what the supplement process is, is the process of incorporating any new legislation or any new ordinances that have been passed into our existing code. Typically, in the in-between time, there is an online ordinance bank that those ordinance are placed in and when you go through the supplement, they become published throughout the code. So the online code's been updated, all of the hard code books that are located in the clerk's office, the Payne County Law Library, Stillwater Public Library, council chambers, they've all been updated.
Counselors, any questions or a motion on the resolution?
Move to adopt a resolution CC-2023-15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. Item 10, appointments. We have, we have some openings on the Board of Adjustment. We have a couple of, we have three vacancies currently. We have one member whose term is expiring as well. We have one, Mr. Rice, Jim Rice, who's currently on the board, has asked, consented to, to be reappointed to a full-year term, a full three-year term, and we appreciate his willingness to do that. We also have an application on file from John Hauk, who has served previously on the Board of Adjustment. That's very important because we need at least three members on the Board of Adjustment for that board to actually function. I will move at this time to reappoint Jim Rice and to, to, to a full term and to appoint Jim Rice to a full, excuse me, and to appoint John Hauk to a full term on the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. We vote a five to zero, those appointments are approved. Thank you so much to Mr. Rice and to Mr. Hauk for their willingness to serve. For the rest of you out there who may be looking for opportunities to serve in our community, the Board of Adjustment is a really important piece of, of city governance. It reviews code requests, special appeals, variances, and that sort of thing when it comes to zoning. So it's a, it's a really important part of, of how zoning works here and if you're interested in that at all, we would encourage you to, to check it out online and to apply for one of the open seats. Item 11, reports from officers and boards. Ms. Carley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. McNichol?
Two items, Mayor, thank you. City of Stillwater is hiring. Full and part-time positions are available in a variety of areas, including police, waste management, Stillwater Regional Airport, water utilities, public works, and more. We have a text service to be notified about openings in the Fire and Police Departments. To receive these notifications, text the words "POLICE" or "FIRE" to 405-742-8281. And to see a full list of employment opportunities with the City of Stillwater, go online to Second item, I wanted to thank the more than 60 people, including the Mayor and Counselor Hawkins, that turned out May 22nd for the cleanup day at Washington School, Burke and T. Washington School. We had people from all over the community that showed up, very dirty work, and filled up three roll-off, big roll-off dumpsters with debris. We are probably two dumpster loads from being finished and probably another volunteer day will take care of that, but it was a team effort. Multiple city departments and staff providing equipment and assistance. It was great. And I would like to thank Michelle Charles for organizing that event. She did a really good job getting everybody together.
It was fantastic. Mr. McNichol didn't mention the fact that he was also out there all day long, working on, on that volunteer day. Really a great cross-section of the community. There were OSU students, there were folks from all over that came out to help. I was there for a couple of hours. There were plenty of people who were there for six or eight. So we really appreciate the work that was done and looking forward, just being in that facility and sort of seeing it start to get cleaned up, the potential for, for what that can be in our community is just fantastic. So thank you so much for those who organized it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Tickets for the Community Center's Daddy Daughter Prom are available online for purchase at stillwater.org/dancingwithdaddy. There are multiple dates and times for this event. Friday, May 5th, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., and Saturday, May 6th, 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., and 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. on Saturday. The prom will be at the Stillwater Community Center located at 315 West 8th Avenue. If you have questions or need additional information, call 405-533-8433.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
My announcement's incredibly important and special. On Monday, May 15th, we will have a celebration, we will have celebration events for City Manager Norman McNichol to honor his more than 46 years of dedicated service to our community. There will be a ceremonial police walkout beginning at 8:30 a.m. in front of the Police Department. This will be live on the Police Department Facebook page. Then a come and go reception from 3:30 to 5:30 in the lobby of the Stillwater Police Department. We are incredibly grateful for his servant's heart and broad shoulders. Norman is leaving us with a legacy of health and safety initiatives, economic growth, and stability efforts, for the overall quality of life that we benefit from today and will continue to appreciate well into the future. And I certainly hope lots of people show up for those events.
Thank you.
No doubt they will. Thank you so much. May 15th. Counselor Clark?
If you had, if you've had difficulty making utility payments or rent payments as a result of COVID-19, the City of Stillwater may be able to help. For more information, go online to stillwater.org/covidhelp or call 405-742-8220. And while I have the floor on the 15th, I will be somewhere between Southern Illinois and Stillwater, driving a U-Haul, bringing my in-laws to Stillwater. And so I will not be here as part of that celebration and I just want to take a moment to thank you for nearly five decades of service to our community. You have basically been on-call 24/7 for almost 47 years and you've been a selfless leader in our community and whether you were walking a beat as a cop or whether you were the police chief or, or serving as a city manager, you've served us faithfully and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Well said. Counselor Harden?
Yes, the Stillwater Public Library and Early Childhood Coalition are hosting a new series called Play Date at the library. It begins May 13th from 10 a.m. to noon. The events will be on the second Saturday of each month through July. The series encourages children to engage with other kids while playing with toys, puzzles, books, while the adults engage in casual conversation about parenting, child development, and more. These are in-person free events. They're drop-in and open to all families. The library is located at 1107 South Duck. And for more information, go to stillwater.org/library.
Awesome, that sounds great. Thank you, Counselor. I will let you all know that the Convenience Collection Center is hosting OSU Student Move-Out Special from May 1st to the 15th. While we hate to see you all go, we'd like for you to go cleanly. Students can drop off bulk items, such as furniture, mattresses, appliances that don't include freon, and other items that you'd like to discard, including electronics. We really, really, really would appreciate it if folks, you know, as you're moving out, we know there's a lot of stuff, there's a lot to do, but we're making it available for free for you to drop this stuff off if you can bring it to the Collection Center. The center's located at 807 South Perkins Road. It's a free event. Students must present an OSU ID when dropping items off. Please help keep our community looking great on, on your way out, so please take advantage of that event. I will also just mention, you see a couple of us have got these little buttons on. There was an event at 4 o'clock today unveiling a new mural in honor, in memory of Chris Salmon, Mayor Chris Salmon, the first woman mayor of, of the City of Stillwater, by OSU artist Carly Roddy. It's down at Chris Salmon Plaza at 9th and Main. It's beautiful mural. We actually had a presentation of, of the finalists here a few weeks ago. Please take some time to, to drop by Chris Salmon Plaza and take a look at that mural which was unveiled earlier today.
I have nothing further on the City Council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the City Council, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for May 1st, 2023. We, on consent, have regular meetings... We, on consent, have regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Consent Docket.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. We voted five to zero. The Consent Docket is approved. Item 5A is Resolution SUA 2023-3, a resolution of the Stillwater Utilities Authority adopting our operating budget for fiscal year 2023-24. Trustees?
Motion to adopt Resolution SUA 2023-3.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. There are no further reports from the Officers of the Board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting for May 1st, 2023. On the Consent Docket, we have regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Consent Docket's approved with a vote of five to zero. Item 5A is Resolution SEDA-2023-2, a resolution of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year 2023-24. Trustees?
Motion to approve SEDA-2023-2.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. Resolution's approved with a vote of five to zero. Nothing further on this agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn SEDA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, SEDA is now adjourned. And at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Public Works Authority Special Meeting for May 1st, 2023. Our Consent Docket is to approve our meeting minutes from May 16th of 2022. Is there a motion on consent, trustees?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. Do I need to, let's see, with, did I not vote?
You.
How did I not vote?
I'm going to vote.
I meant to vote. Can we?
We can vote again. I'll just put another one, are you ready?
All right. So, we're voting on the motion to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Consent Docket's approved. Sorry about that. Item 5A is Resolution SPWA 2023-1, a resolution of the Stillwater Public Works Authority adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year 2023-24. Trustees, is there a motion?
I move to adopt SPWA 2023-1.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. There is nothing else on this agenda, but I do want to just make a quick comment that while we go through and are able to adopt these resolutions, adopting our budgets relatively quickly at this point, it's because there's been a whole lot of work by our finance team, public meetings, meetings among staff, council meetings where these items are put together and debated, and we appreciate all the work from Finance, Christie Cluck's team, from Melissa Reames, and all the folks who work on finances here at the city.
One quick item in that regard, Mayor, the work that goes into that. SPWA hasn't had any activity since at least before 2015, and with your leave, staff and the Attorney's Office might take a look at removing SPWA from...
I would love to hear what might be done in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing nothing else on the agenda...
I might also note, the City Manager has met his commitment to stay through budget approval, and he's free to retire now.
I'm still not sure I'm okay with that, but we'll, your point is well taken. The budgets have been approved. Anything further announcements-wise? Is there a motion to adjourn the Stillwater Public Works Authority?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, SPWA is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening. Have a good night.